Four o'clock. We'll go ahead and start. Good afternoon. My name is Joe Marler. I'm the chairman of the Regional Planning Commission. Today's our monthly meeting for March. I've called a meeting to order. Looks like we do have a quorum today. Thanks, everybody, for making it today. So we'll begin the meeting today with a pledge of allegiance. I'd ask everyone in the room, please stand while we pledge the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, individual, with liberty and justice for all. So we'll get right into today's agenda, beginning with reports from staff. All right, so we'll move down to the agenda. Any unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call a question on the motion and second we had at the last monthly meeting to approve the original submitted site plan for the convenience We need to get a no vote on that since we had the special call meeting and approved the amended site plan at that meeting. We need to get a no vote on the original site plan so we don't have one, two site plans still open, and that one never got voted on.
So there's already been a motion and a second, so we don't need another motion. We see a vote, right?
Right.
All right. So all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, very good. Any other unfinished business? Very good. We'll move into today's new business, beginning first with plat. Number one, Emerald Middle is Phase Three, which is a subdivision plat. So on the agenda, we'll begin with Page Three. So this is a request that comes in the form of a proposal for the final plat. Hope everybody's had a chance to take a look. Good afternoon, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Kirk Johnson, 816 David Crockett Highway, survey record, Winchester. We're requesting final plat approval on Phase Three of Emerald Middle.
Entertaining a motion in the second. That way we can have a discussion.
Move to a further submitted.
I'm sorry.
We opened up a hearing first.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we'll open up the public hearing. And if anyone wants to comment, we'd ask that you state your name and address, and let me get your comments to two minutes, please.
I have a question just about, just so I'm clear. It says Phase Three.
All right, so if we're going to have a discussion, we have to have a motion first. But I want to make sure that the public time to comment, if there was any comments from the gallery, and it appears that there's none. All right, now we'll take a time.
I move to approve that submitted.
All right, thank you. All right, now we have a motion and a second. Now, Robin, what were your questions?
Yes, sir. It says that it's Phase Three, but if you look at the, like, starting on page eight, it says Phase Two. I'm just making sure it's all the same thing. Is that just a typo or?
Are you at page eight?
Yes, sir. I'm on page eight. It says Phase Two zoning, and Phase Two aerial is on page nine. I'm just making sure it's all the same thing.
The title of the drawing.
It does say Phase Two.
Yes, sir. Is that just a typo or?
Thank you.
This is my flat, and it is Phase Three.
Oh, that, that's just a typo.
Okay. All right, just making sure.
I use the same.
Well, on this map, it also says Phase Two.
That's just the.
That's the current map.
Okay, okay.
I don't want to get caught on a technicality.
Yeah.
Agreed to vote? Assuming we are. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, the next item today is the next minor subdivision final plat, beginning of Page Ten. This also comes today in a quest in the form of a minor subdivision final plat approval, creating two residential lots. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yamalit Skeda, and the address, District Three Street, Shelbyville.
Good afternoon. All right, are there any comments in the gallery? Since we're in a time of public hearing.
She's down.
What?
She's down, looking.
Yes, I'm aware. All right, so there's no comments. We'll go ahead and move to a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Have a second. Thank you, Scott. All in favor, say aye, please. So is there any discussion?
It's already voted.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, we just voted. All right, so I guess that was easy. All right, thank you. All right, next on the agenda today, the zoning amendments. Number one, ZMA 217, and it is on page seventeen? Seventeen? All right, this one is the applicant is requesting a rezoned lot from median district R2 to commercial C2 on East Warren Street.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss.
Okay. Have a second. Thanks. All right, so this property is on the southwest corner of East Warren Street and South Corner Street. It's right around the corner, the intersection. It's northeast part of the city, 31,300 square feet, and it's currently underdeveloped or not developed at all.
Clarification, was there a motion made?
May I withdraw my motion, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, in motion discussed, you may say again.
What was the motion?
I was wanting to talk about it, but I was looking at the wrong one, so I'm done popping.
Good job. All right, so this one looks pretty straightforward. We're just changing from R2 to C2 to accommodate a stuffy building.
Mr. Chairman, we have a public hearing, and then we'll, you have to vote on it and discuss it.
Yeah, so is there anybody from the gallery who'd like to speak about this zoning change request on Warren Street? Awesome.
I will move to approve that submitted.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye, please. Any opposed?
No.
So noted? Thank you. All right, moving down to this. The next one, ZMA 218, and this one is on page 22. This applicant also requesting a rezoned lot from C2, general commercial to agricultural A on Left and Mill Road.
I can say something. Do you have any credit?
Yes, sir.
I live at 300 Left and Mill Road. I actually live on the property, but I want to rezonate.
Thank you. So what's the nature of your request today, sir?
To build from the commercial back to the regional farm it was years ago. The original farm was 72 acres. I bought 18 points something. Joe, Jim Connolly, and Stephen Bill bought the other 50. They have now sold that. It's going to be assisted living on the property right beside it. They act like they wanted to buy mine. I give my price, they declined, so I'm going to go back to the farm, and I'm going to build my personal house back there. That's what I'd like to do.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't think I have any questions. You may have any questions.
Is this directly across from the airport?
To the side.
It's.
To the side.
Okay.
I was not the one that the other person, a couple of years, got stirred up some controversy over.
Okay.
They tried dragging me in the middle of that, too, and I declined.
Well, as long as it's not a flat plan.
But we've been living out there, it'd be five years, 15 years already, in the old farmhouse, the old farmhouse. I'm also on mill preconstruction. I have, currently have four houses being built in Tallahassee. I've got four of the lots in Tallahassee, so we get a lot of building in this area.
I move to approve.
All right, have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any other questions for the applicant? Any other comments from the gallery? All right, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, next is ETA 211. Texting him a change to the table allowing a sign variance. Sign table, Article Seven, to allow wall signs on exterior walls that do not front along a public street. Anybody wants to make comment on this in the gallery? I think I'm not. All right, so we'll open it up for a motion so we can discuss it. If anyone wants to make a motion on this?
I move to approve.
Thank you. All right, so this is a slippery slope, in my opinion. We're changing sun regulations for commercial, and I think that it opens up Pandora's box for other changes. I think that the ordinance is fine the way it is where we allow signage to face the street. And I think that that's adequate for current commercial, whether it be C1 or C2. So I don't support the change.
Lee, can you give us some clarification on this again, please?
This is to allow wall signs on one exterior wall that doesn't face a public street. Currently, we just allow, you know, if it's a building, a wall sign, if it's facing a public street, then they can put their sign on it. If it's, like, not facing a street or, you know, facing an adjacent lot, we currently don't permit.
So they can't have a sign on the front and then on the side as well? Just on the front side?
Just on the front.
The front side of the street.
Whichever way the building fronts on the street.
Yeah, if it's a corner lot, then they can have two, because it fronts on, or if it's one that has the double front, it's one in front and one in the back. You know, they can have it on the back and the front.
And I'm in favor of it because we have, we have companies in town that have signs on two sides, and we allow them simply because of the fact that there's a street running in front and there's a street running on the side, and yet we penalize people who are sitting on a lot that has a parking lot next to their building and not a street. So we're penalizing them, and I think that's unfair to those people who want to do that. That's the only reason I asked to have it changed, to have the sign on the side. Plus, I didn't see anything about, because the sign's not going to be any bigger than the one on the front, I didn't see anything that would be detrimental or make the town look uglier. I mean, we're not talking about putting signs out on the front lawn or something like that. We're putting them on the building so that.
Last time, I couldn't see any reason that this would be detrimental to the city for people to have the things on the side.
Exactly.
And I still haven't.
But I do see.
Come up with any reason why it would be, in my opinion, detrimental. So for that reason, I'm in favor of it as well.
Any other discussion?
It wasn't me.
All right, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
All opposed? No. I'm voting on this one. All right. So any other new business today? That being said, we will adjourn this meeting, and we'll move now into opening up of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So we'll call this meeting to order, as we do have an agenda item today. We have a CUP or a conditional use permit application for a new business. This is on page 32 in today's packet. Good afternoon, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
George Day, 808 Lake Lane.
Tell us about your application, sir.
I'm.
What do you plan to do? What do you need, what do you need the conditional use?
I'm currently, I'm looking into starting a detail business out of my house. I'm zoned R1. I want to currently do it out of my house. Anything from basic wash interiors to minor paint corrections, all done in the garage.
Anything done in what?
It's all done in my garage. I converted my garage to be able to do everything in time.
If you were to, you know, as your business grows, and you were to move into a different location, what would happen to this zoning? Would it remain commercial? Or is that?
Yes.
It would?
What? And it would stay commercial with it?
It's residential, I mean.
I know.
I'm not looking to change the zoning, just to get admission to run a business out of the office.
But if he moves the business to a, to a different location, he'll still have the ability, the conditional use permit would still be in effect there even after that, as long as he doesn't sell the property, right? Because the conditional use permit goes with him, not with the property.
Right, right.
Could he later on down the road have a different business within this same property without?
He'd have to do another conditional use permit.
And what are the restrictions of your subdivision? What did I say?
I have no restrictions. I talked to the developer, and they've written no restrictions. They actually live in the same subdivision, and they've run three businesses out of their house. So they purposely wrote it in there that there's no restrictions.
There's no restrictions in that subdivision?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Not, it's not as far as running a business or operating a business out of your house or anything like that. I think, I think there's a few cosmetic restrictions to it, nothing pertaining to my business.
Explain to me paint correction.
Compounding and polishing and stuff like scratch removals and swirl marks and stuff like that, fixing the finish on a vehicle.
So will you actually be painting?
No.
So there won't be, like, paint touch-up or anything like that?
No. Everything is done through polishes and compounds and stuff like that, working it into the paint, actually fixing scratches and stuff.
Lee, do you want to go over your recommendations?
Yeah, I, you know, with the seven conditions, I would recommend it to be, you know. I approve. I listed those down here as far as the business operations, having confined inside the garage. Customers are served by appointment only. Only one vehicle at a time can be parked on the lot for detailing. Only one employee, no signs. Install a six-foot buffer in your evergreen trees or privacy fence along the south, along the lot line to the south.
Yeah.
Where the actual garage is that it'd be working out of, and the operation hours from being from eight to six, Monday through Saturday, and 10 to six on Sunday.
Now, I noticed it says the fire inspector and water retention inspector have inspected and approved this. Do we have records of that, Lee?
I don't have any records on me. We were at a meeting, I was discussing, that's Richard Steiner, who's the city fire marshal. He goes and does the inspections on the stormwater for car washes and such, and he's, I believe he's already been out there and had the discussion with the applicant before about what the city's regulations are on the stormwater as far as.
On how it's going to control, because I'm wondering how he's going to dispose of the water and where it's going to go, you know? Are you going to capture?
You don't have a drain in the floor, do you?
No, I don't, but the water retention guy that came out and looked at it, he basically said as long as the water doesn't run out into the road or into the ditch in the front, that it follows the city ordinance and stuff. The water that I.
Is that Jim Patterson?
Yeah, Steiner's the one I remember, but it's, the city contracts, the guy comes out once a month or once every couple of weeks. But all the water that I dispose of runs out into the side yard or into my front yard right there, so it never goes out into the road or into the ditch or anything like that. He said that follows city ordinance, that I'm okay there.
You're saying that everything will be in the garage, but on your application, you've got it to be done in the garage and in the driveway, so, Lee?
Very, very rare occasion, if I get a vehicle that's heavily soiled, a lot of mud or something like that, I might rinse it off in the driveway to prevent having all that in the garage, but for the most part, everything is done inside the garage, from wash to paint correction, all of it.
Do you agree with the seven points that Mr. Lawson presented?
I'd like to have a copy of it, first I heard about it, just to make sure.
You'll need to know that before we can vote on it. If you want a copy or?
From what I heard, I don't have a copy. I'd just like a copy, that makes sure I'm following.
Does she make sure one of us has a copy?
I guess I just want to make sure the hours are.
Okay.
So this is going to require you to install a privacy fence.
I see that. Privacy fence or?
Evergreen trees.
Or evergreen trees of some kind, some kind of buffer.
Right. It's not a problem.
Lee, have you checked the restrictions to see if there's any restrictions for the neighborhood?
I have not looked at the covenants for the neighborhood.
That's what I'm wondering, you know, I've never seen a neighborhood that didn't have restrictions.
I wouldn't.
Square footage or something. I'm just wondering.
Yeah. This is actually the house that is facing Lincoln Street, had a lot of property behind it, four lots were, and they sold it to one of my neighbors down the road. They bought it with intentions of building a house with lots of property on both sides of it. They changed their mind and sold their lots individually, but before they did that, they wanted to keep one of their lots for their house, so they wrote the restrictions for that, those three or four lots. Then they changed their mind again, went ahead and sold all four lots, kept their permanent residence, and, but all the lots already had the restrictions and stuff written into it. So it was just three or four lots, mine and then my two or three neighbors right beside it. So it's only three or four lots. The Linda Lane is totally separate from the three or four lots that I'm on.
You're not, your address is not in that subdivision?
It's not part of the entire Linda Lane, just the three or four lots, the first three or four lots on the right side of the road of Linda Lane are separate from the rest of it.
At the Texas Assessor's Office, it doesn't state that you live in the subdivision, and it's not?
It's the, it's the owner, it's, I can't remember her name, but they're right across the street. They actually live on Linda Lane. Shannon, Shannon Cole, yes.
Shannon Jeff Cole.
Shannon Jeff Cole is the technical name of the subdivision. That's the previous owners of the four lots that got divided.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Day, you're, you're okay with these conditions recommended by the city?
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody else, seekers, anybody else in the audience that wants to speak?
What?
We check and see if there's another anybody else in the audience that might want to speak.
There's nobody left. So anybody else?
I'm more of a right type of.
Anybody else want to make a comment on this in the gallery, on this conditional use permit change request?
I was just here just out of curiosity. I'm Brian's neighbor, his immediate next door neighbor, and I was aware of his intentions, so I was just kind of curious to see, you know, what, what restrictions, if any, were, were going to be imposed, how it might affect my property down the road, too. You know, if it were a business where there were several cars, it appears that a lot of that's been addressed with the number of cars that could be there. So potentially, if it got out of hand, you know, had four or five cars there, it would be, be kind of a eyesore, I guess.
I'm going to capture your comments for the minute, sir. Can I get your name and address, please?
Jared Melson, 110 Linda Lane.
Thank you. You have any other comments? You've got two minutes.
Does his lot drain over on yours, or is there any worries there?
That, that might be another area of concern. I know he's had the inspector out there. I don't know how much water would go there, and right now, you know, as of the moment, it doesn't appear to be a problem at all. Several people wash their cars in the driveway anyway, so we've had a ton of rain lately and haven't had any problems with that, so I don't foresee any, but again, you just never
I will move to approve the request with the recommended conditions listed on the staff report.
One second.
Can we get you to amend that to make sure that it passes the restrictions in his subdivision?
I don't, I don't know if we want to do that or not. I don't, I don't know if we want to do that or not.
Okay.
It's, uh, would be trying to enforce a private, or a private party agreement.
Okay.
I mean, if he doesn't follow it, then that'll, you know, someone will end up, you know, they'll have to go through a legal...
Okay.
So Larry made a motion, anybody make a second?
Larry, we have a motion with conditional approval, based on like, recommended conditions from the city stamp.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion, and a second, any discussion? We'll vote. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Day. And I think that's, yeah, for zoning of, and of fields. We'll adjourn zoning on the fields. Is our next meeting?
April 16th.
Very good. Thank you.